I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and I'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a couple changes to the agenda. The interview that we were gonna have at 7:15 and then the one at 8 is not going to happen. They both, one is stuck on a water, water main break and the other one, I didn't get a hold of and he was gonna try to make it up today, but he is working on a project as well. So we'll try to get those rescheduled for those times.
Do you want any bullets here?
I'd pass it. So as long as you're okay with, I think we'll do a little flexibility in the agenda tonight so that we can get through some of the stuff before we get into kinda the mundane type things. So if you're okay, we'll start with the reading of the minutes from the last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve or if there's any changes?
If there's no changes, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jason to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item is the reading of the bills. There is one bill that they're gonna have to write a new check for on the Hillsborough Fire Department. One zero needs to come off of that.
Sorry guys. They caught it.
So unless you have any other changes, do I have a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make the motion.
Jason makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we'll hold off on the delinquent bill. So I think we'll go, the first item will have Steve with the Sheriff's Office come first. That way you don't have to sit here all night if you wanna come up to the podium. So I know we've been talking about the dog issues and for a while. And Jason and I had some ideas and so all of us just need to hash it out to figure out what'll work best for everybody and what the commission is willing to do. I know that Jason and I had talked about that our best option probably would be that we have our own city pound, which would be a temporary holding facility for the 72 hours that are required in our ordinance. And then from that point, they could be transported to one of the shelters that would be willing to take them. I think we have two to three that I reached out to that would be interested in it. And I know Steve that you were looking for a countywide solution and I personally wouldn't have an issue if we did it countywide and had it where if Mayville or Hatton or any of the other ones had a dog that was there and needed to be impounded here, they would just need to cover the costs of the impound. If the owner wasn't found. Thoughts on that Steve?
You're right in respect that countywide solution would be preferential to me just because of what we do. Obviously the county doesn't really have a dog. The, uh... The way I read century code, if there's an issue in the county with dogs, whether they're running at large, whether they're aggressive dogs, whether they're just a nuisance, it's up to the person, the complaining party, to write a letter to the district court. They get sent, the owner gets sent a notice if you can identify who the owner is. And on a second instance, then the owner gets fined. Actually just summoned it, it's up to the judge at that point what he's gonna do with them. I was somewhat in favor of what you're talking about, the city, you know, doing a temporary holding facility. But I did get some feedback, I guess, from one of the people in town that does a lot of work with dogs, that kinda stuff, humane society type stuff. And she had some real concerns about liability issues if the city were to do that. And I guess, you know, that would be a city thing if you guys were willing to take that on. But I guess that would be a concern and something I would have to turn by the county commission to see what their thoughts are as far as liability, what we're gonna do that way. And there is no easy answer, I'll say that. Just to bring you up to speed, I have been trying to work with Circle of Friends again. I think you guys have probably talked about that and we all know they've had their issues lately trying to come up with things. I know the city Grand Forks just gave them $30,000 to be their, their solution and certainly we're not looking for that. We don't do enough animals for that to be close to accurate. I think in the past, you know, I was looking for my file with Circle of Friends earlier and stuck it somewhere when I went up there to try to talk to them before all this stuff kinda hit the news. Don't know exactly where I put it, so I gotta keep looking. If I remember right, I thought it was $50 if we impounded somebody's animal that would get paid to Circle of Friends. That was a daily rate, $25 or $50 a day. Given their current situation, I don't know if that would be enough and I don't know what a dollar amount would be feasible for the city. But if they would be willing to do that on an as-needed basis, to me that would be the best solution all the way around. Not that I love the idea of taking a deputy off the road to take a dog up to Grand Forks. But in my mind, that does two things. One, it removes our liability issue and it also makes that owner have to do a little something to get that dog back and maybe take better care of it. Those are my thoughts, I guess, right now. I wish I had some more hard-to-ask answers for you, but...
But I think if Circle of Friends is willing to or somebody, that would be the best option.
That would definitely be the optimal. Again, the problem is pending somebody down right now with their, their changes on their board. As I understand it, the president of the board is right now acting as the general manager for Circle of Friends. I just haven't been able to contact with them yet. I guess given, given the opportunity, that's what I would like to do is try to work with them yet and see if we can solidify something. One thing that would be helpful is to know what the city would be willing to pay per day and with the idea that, you know, if we identify an owner, that that owner ultimately would be responsible for that fee back to the cities.
Great. And the only reason I looked outside was the other two places are the ones that I had looked in who didn't wanna, didn't wanna do that temporary storage. I did reach out to Ryan to see if the city would be liable and we would be covered under our insurance policy so that all that liability would go under it. We'd have to work out the logistics on it, but, and how we were gonna do it, but it would work that we could do it. But commission's any thought on a dollar amount that we could? I know it's anywhere from 50 to, it's right around $50 a day just to house a dog at a kennel, so...
That's where I'm thinking if they're gonna be willing to do it, we gotta be looking at probably 50 to 75 dollars a day minimum.
Does that get billed to the person?
That would get billed to the city first, but then the person would have to pay the city.
And the big person would have to pay to release, right?
Yep.
Right. And if we, they didn't say they didn't get it, I assume JR that we could put it on as a tax lien if we needed to.
Sorry, someone texted me the mic's not working at the podium, so...
Yep, someone texted me too.
Is it turned on?
Yeah, we are. And they said it, there's a ticking, and they said there's a ticking sound, yep.
Actually, we're dedicated fans.
People are concerned about what you're saying. They texted the meeting. Make sure they hear what you're at the stake.
Have you ever researched what other counties are doing or other areas?
I don't know that anybody else in our area anyway is doing anything. We did talk to Golden Valley?
Yeah.
Golden Valley County. They've got an ordinance, basically it follows what century code says. And it's the write the letter to the judge thing. But again, we're kinda talking apples and oranges here because the city has it on ordinance. So that's what we're trying to work through as far as you guys are concerned. But then as far as the county goes, it's a different circumstance.
So you're saying that this Circle of Friends, is that what it is?
Yep.
That they are uncertain whether they would take them, but if we guaranteed them that $50, whatever, they would take them?
I don't know that they would take them. I'm just, I'm in hopes that that would be the case that if we were able to pay them for the little bit that we would use them, they would be willing to do that.
How do they, when somebody comes to pick up their dogs and how does that work? They must have a fee that they charge them there too or no?
I'm trying to remember what that contract said previously. I'm sure there was a fee that they had to pay there. And then if they couldn't show proof of vaccination, that kinda stuff, then they would also have to do that before the dog left. But aside from that, that's pretty much it.
And they wouldn't wanna deal with that fee as part of it, we have here and I guarantee. Or wouldn't there be any charge to us if they did?
I think, I think basically, do you remember their contract? I believe the city pays Circle of Friends regardless and then it's incumbent on the city to go back to the owner to get that payment.
My concern too is those who are like strays or people who drop their dogs off on purpose.
It'd have to be where...
What about dogs that aren't picked up? What do they do with them? Nobody claims a dog, what kind of...
Then it would be, if it's adoptable, then they would try to adopt it out. If it's not adoptable, eventually. I don't know if the Circle of Friends does euthanize.
I don't know.
I don't think they do.
I think it would have to be that, they'd have to be willing to, before they could release the dog, that that bill would have to be paid by them, by that owner. And we would pay if...
I think the owner pays if they go pick it up. If nobody picks it up, then it comes on.
Then I would be okay and I would, I mean...
We try everything we can before we take them up there because we don't wanna lose the deputy off the road to start with. So, I mean, we're usually putting it on Facebook and making calls to everybody we can think of ahead of time to try to find where it belongs, but sometimes we just can't.
And that was, the hope was a temporary housing so you guys didn't have to take somebody off the road right away? You know, if it's at four o'clock in the morning and there's only one deputy on, can we house it here temporary until?
And that's with the city taking care of all of that?
Right.
Because I definitely don't wanna get in the business of maintaining the kennel.
No, it would be a...
If we had a place where we could take it and put it in and we're done, then...
That was my thought with it. I don't know what the rest of the commission, but I know that we would have some people that would volunteer or, you know, be on an on-call basis to come up and take, as long as Sheriff's Department notified that, hey, we put a dog in the kennel, it'll be in there for a few days or whatever till we can get it to the...
My concern is that the dog gets cared for because I've seen some of these kennels where they'll just put them in a deal and then they'll give them water and food once in a while. I don't want a dog sitting in there. And I don't want the Sheriff's Department to be responsible for it either, so...
But ultimately, we don't do anything. We're gonna keep having the issues that we're having and people are complaining about it, so...
Well, right now it's up in the air what this, what do you call it, cattle air or what's the name of it?
Circle of Friends.
Yeah, that's up in the air. We don't even know what they're gonna do.
That's correct.
So, until we know what they're gonna do, unless you got other kennels that you're working with.
Like I said, those kennels will not take them until they know that they're adoptable. So we hold them for 72 hours is our rule, is our, as the, let's say the ordinance. And if nobody picks it up within 72 hours, then the dog is adoptable. And they would be willing to take it off our hands at that point.
So you're saying as long as we would have to care for them 72 hours? And you would have people that would volunteer to do that or...
There's some that said...
They would do it?
Yep. I think we could do an on-call basis if we had to, if we had to come to that route. So we have a couple options to work through. We would have to spend some money to get some kennels put in, in some areas. Ultimately, when Ray was here, we had a place for that, kinda the same thing.
This is gonna, how many dog complaints do we get in?
It's very hidden this, but it seems like lately it's been quite a few.
Yep.
And out of them, how many get claimed? Like over 90%? All of them?
I would say 85 to 90% we find the owners.
Are they repeat?
Usually. We've had a few dogs that we've had a hard time catching. And that's the other thing, how much time do we spend trying to catch a dog that is running around?
What do you do with them now? You just give them at the office or what do you, until you find the owner?
For a while I had the, we called it the playpen. It was the fenced area by the sheriff's office where the prisoners used to go out and do their outdoor rec. We put them in there. Now I've got a smaller crate that if it's not a huge dog, I can put her in.
And does this seem to be an issue just in Hillsborough or is it like an issue in Trail County altogether?
That's an issue everywhere.
I'd say right now Hillsborough's the hot spot for sure. And again, it's only in the cities where they have their own kennels.
At least we know people are listening.
They said can hear everything better now when they're ticking a sound.
Alright. Well, I think Steve, if we figure out if Circle of Friends will work with us, then kinda go from there.
I'll continue working that. If you wanna look in on your end of things, if that's the direction you decide you wanna go. We'll be flexible. Like I said, I guess the only thing I would say is I just don't wanna get in that end where we're maintaining the kennels and feeding them water and that kinda stuff.
And that wasn't something that I was gonna work on. It would be once you guys put it in the kennel, it's our responsibility to figure out what we're gonna do.
Make a notification to somebody so you know they're there and you take it from there.
And that's if the commission wishes to do that, so I'll keep looking into it.
That's what I had on that issue.
You have anything else for us to make?
The only other thing I can tell you is we're starting budget hearings right now. No idea where that's gonna wash out, but as soon as we have something, Flynn will send that out so you guys have an idea of what we're looking at.
And you guys are getting close to being staffed again on the deputy side, not on the dispatcher or how was that?
Closer.
Closer.
Closer. We still got a ways to go, but we're getting better.
As long as you keep vehicles coming and not get them wrecked?
Yes. That's all I had. Unless you guys have anything else?
Thank you Steve.
Thanks Steve.
Thank you.
So the commission, are you guys okay with us keep looking at it to see as an option? So I said it'd be 72 hours max that we would ever hold or thereabouts. I mean, if 72 hours came up at midnight, I don't think we're gonna haul them down in the middle of the night somewhere, but around that time.
I don't have a problem as long as they're, as long as we got volunteers that are gonna take care of these animals.
And that's, part of it is, I didn't wanna ask and officially say to the public who would be interested in helping until you guys gave a complete blessing on it and then... But it'd be probably a rotational type thing where, you know, maybe Dave, you're on one week and then I'm on the next week, Casey's on the next week, kinda like what we do on the public works side where... And then if they would get a call and just say that there's a dog, put in the kennel, you know, check on it at least twice a day or three times a day and kinda go from there. So Jason and I can kinda work on that. We've started on it. Okay. Uh, the next thing we'll do is we'll move down to the Red River Valley Water Supply Project because we got a lot of guys here for that and I appreciate you guys coming tonight to talk to us about it and kinda give us a scope for the community. I got to listen to both of you, but apparently they didn't like my talk and they wanted to hear from you.
Well, good evening. I'm Dwayne DeCray, I'm the general manager of Garrison diversion Conservancy District and the head of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. I got with me tonight Jay Anderson, who is our first vice president of Garrison down from Lisbon area. And I got Sean Gaddy up in Grand Forks who the A2S is going to give us the financial figures. And Steve Burian, who's getting the presentation set up right now with Burian and his associates who's been working with cities one-on-one to figure out your nominations if you actually wanna nominate for the project.
We're gonna get it so done. Don't have a long queue.
I can call this technology incompetent, Merron, North Dakota.
We heard you wanted an abbreviated presentation, so once we get it up here, we'll go pretty quick. We have a presentation that goes for over two hours if you wanna hear that one.
Or eight. We don't need that.
No, we're on a timeline tonight. I have no place. She can go for it.
A few times, I can't.
Remember on the board, on the commission, that owns a coffee shop? That could've brought us something to keep us energized throughout the night?
God, who's that been?
Well, the fridge is full of syrup.
I'll give you a scoop and you can use it.
Okay, full of coffee here?
Make some afogados.
I don't know, wait until midnight or after?
Yeah, that's called afogados. We make them, all different flavors.
Casey, remember gotta order a longer cable.
Well, I think we've done enough introductions, so let's just move right into that. So, Red River Valley Water Supply Project is, we always point out, is an economic development initiative and a long-term water supply initiative for the state of North Dakota, the central and eastern part of the state. So this is a DWR map, Department of Water Resources. And what you can take away from that is that North Dakota's groundwater is basically tapped out. They aren't really permitting any more water out of Bismarck. And this is the map that they've recently published that kinda shows why that is. If the yellow or gold, if you wanna call it, that is likely in tight soils and would be hard to get out or is salty and so there probably isn't much really want for that type of water. But the red and the blue are usable and as you can see, the red is pretty much all permitted out. And then the blue is the Missouri River or the area right around it that the water is available at. Other than that, the Missouri River in a 30-style drought is basically the only surface water that North Dakota has. Missouri represents over 95% of the surface water in North Dakota. So the project benefits if you sign up is that surface water supplies will be limited in a drought other than the Missouri River. It'll supplement limited groundwater supplies as we just saw on the last slide. North Dakota, one of the most agricultural states in the nation. As you can see, we're pretty much tapped out for industrial water right now, except if you're right on the Missouri River. And that's the reason for the project bringing water to the east is because most of our egg projects are in the east and we aren't really adding much value to them because of lack of water in North Dakota. It'll mitigate fluctuations in water availability. I don't know if we've got that slide in there tonight or not, but North Dakota is basically never normal. We're either awash in water or we're very short in water, that we kinda ping pong between the two. And then it'll provide economic benefits. In fact, in a 30-style drought, without this project, the state will suffer about a $30 billion plus loss to the state of North Dakota if we have a 30-style drought and this project hasn't been completed yet. So this is what the project looks now like now. I know when we were here in 2016 and you first nominated, that the project went down to the Missouri River, so it didn't look quite like this. We were able to finally work with the federal government and get a record of decision, which we were never able to get before. And so we were able to get the water now out of the McCuskey Canal. That shortens the pipe up over 20 miles, so it saves us about $300 million in capital expenditures. And it also saves us a ton of money in operating expenses because instead of a 600-foot lift out of the river, we'll have about a 200-foot lift out of the canal. And when you're running million horsepower pumps with electricity, that's a lot of dollars. The project cost now was, and $20, $24, about $1.26 billion. So this, Steve, you go ahead and talk.
Are these mics sensitive? Pick me up if I stand here?
Go ahead.
So this is the same map that Dwayne just showed you. So the project would come over from that canal that you can see on the left side of the map and then come over and dump into the Lake Ashtrabula, which is right north of Valley City. And then Bald Hill Dam controls the Ashtrabula and the water would run down the Cheyenne River, enter the Red River north of Fargo and then run up in the Red River up to the Canadian border. When we look at the Hillsborough area, and we usually talk about Mayville and Hillsborough together because both of you are in somewhat of a similar situation, you can see that the primary concept that we've looked at to get water over to you is that brown pipeline that runs from Cooperstown and then extends over to the Hillsborough area. And if that were done, you'd be capturing Missouri River water in its non-diluted form versus if we picked it up at the river, you'd be essentially getting river water with a little bit of Missouri River water in it. We did look and will continue to try to look at getting water out of the Missouri, or out of the Red River at Hillsborough. However, one of the keys to that in low flows is a low-head dam, some type of structure in the river that forms a dam that creates a constant head. And then we put the intake behind it, so when the river's really, really low, we have a way to capture that water. And the closest low-head dams to you unfortunately are in Fargo and Grand Forks. And it's very difficult to permit a dam these days. And so it does appear like the most cost-effective way to get water to you would be to partner with some of your neighbors, bring it across in an enclosed pipe and capture the high quality of the Missouri River water as a result of that.
So this is kinda how Garrison and Lake Agassy works. Lake Agassy was formed in 2005 by the North Dakota Legislature and it represents the users. And so Garrison diversion by statute is the owner and operator of this project. And we also represent the state of North Dakota, which is putting in 75% of the cost of the project. So we provide the water supply to the Lake Agassy Water. So we provide the water supply to the Lake Agassiz Water Authority, and then Lake Agassiz would actually be who would supply the water to you after the project is completed, and then you'll pay your participation costs back to Lake Agassiz Water Authority, and then they will send on the state share to us, which we will give to the state. So this is our twenty-three to twenty-five work plan. The North Dakota Legislature appropriated us a hundred and eighty million dollars, and with the twenty-five percent cost share, that's sixty million dollars local share, that brings up our working capital to two hundred and forty million for the next two years. The yellow boxes show us just a continuing design, engineering design that we're working on, and then the green represents what's under construction. This summer, we'll actually have three construction companies in the Carrington area, they're already there working, they haven't started laying any pipe yet, but they're doing other things. We've got two of them east of town, Garni didn't finish up last summer, so they're supposed to finish up their contract this year, third year they'll be there, and then Carstensen and Oscar Renda are the other two, Oscar Renda will be east of town, and then Carstensen will be west of where Garni is now. So the project is critical for North Dakota, we've already talked about, we're pretty much out of water for industrial needs, and so if the state's economic opportunities are gonna continue to grow, we have many thirsty industries that we're looking at, Steve's gonna go through all that and show you what kinda industries with what kind of water it takes and what your options might be, whatever you're thinking about nominating. This, the pipe size was projected out to twenty-seventy-five, so we think we're good for fifty years, the pipe itself should last a hundred years, so we should be good to go for quite a few years, and we do wanna point out, and it's not a threat, but we do wanna point out, there's a finite amount of water in the pipe, and we've been to quite a few meetings, and it looks like that the whole pipe is going to be appropriated out at this point. So if you miss your opportunity now to be part of the pipe, there's a good chance that the pipe will be sold out and there won't be any more water available. And the timeline is, I don't know if we've got that slide in here, but the timeline is we're trying to get a memorandum of commitment for what you wanna nominate for in the June-July timeframe, and then in December, right before we go back to the legislature and ask for money, that we would have some type of a participation agreement signed with you that you are in the project for the long haul.
So if we go back to twenty sixteen, and like Dwayne said, we could talk literally for hours on this project, and we were asked to kinda keep our presentation to as close to fifty minutes as we could, but if you go back to the original project that was designed, that was gonna be a federal project, and when it became a state project, the state encouraged us to go out and knock on everybody's door from the Missouri River to the Red River and from Canada and South Dakota. So in twenty sixteen, we went out and had approximately a hundred meetings, I think three or four of them were in Hillsborough, and at the time, you guys agreed tonight to nominate for point five cubic feet per second of water from the project. Dwayne mentioned that there's two ways the project will serve people, one is in a drought emergency, and because you guys use groundwater, we don't expect that you'll have a problem during a drought. The second is if you think that there's a potential that an industry could be located in your area, and then you don't have enough water to serve them. And what we looked at back in twenty sixteen is that you felt that there was a potential for an industry to develop in this area, as you looked at partnering with Mayville and the real water districts nearby, and having enough water collectively that you could stand up a sufficient water supply for industry, and if you look over on the far-right blue box there, you can see that Mayville elected to nominate for point five CFS, just like you did, and then East Central, which is the merger of both Grand Forks Trail, out of Thompson, and then your trail, real water that was down here, they nominated for collectively three point four CFS, of which, of point five of that was intended to be for trail, so you have a pretty good chunk of water down here that you could potentially serve to an industry. And the reason that's important is that many of these agricultural and even non-egg technology industries will use more water than your entire permit, and so if you're going to look at potentially having them, and you don't have to, but if you're going to look at that, given that the groundwater is all used up, and given that your permits are limited, this would be a potential way to achieve that, and you can see in the lower green box that of a total nomination for the project, approximately half of it is for that drought emergency, so the Grand Forks and the Fargos and the Dallas Cities of the world that are on surface water and expect their water to dry up during a drought, and the other half is recognizing this big uptick in industrial demands. This then is somewhat of a complicated graphic, but you can see Hillsborough at point five, Mayville at point five, East Central at three point four. If point five means nothing to you, point five CFS is about two hundred and twenty-four gallons a minute, so you can imagine that in comparison to maybe the water plant capacity that you've talked about, and we, what we put on this graphic is the type of water that typical egg industries use. So you can see in that zero to point five, that like follow processing turkey or chickens, a pasta plant, the beet plant would fit into that, low-end potato processing, oil seed processing would all fit into that. If you move over into some of the sizes of the current ethanol plants and the current, like soybean cracking facilities and some of the other facilities that are out there, we're hearing a little bit more about beef now and dairy and cheese as the new laws kick in in North Dakota where corporations can eject twenty-five percent of the capital into private companies, that would take you into more of that green area, which would mean that you'd have to partner with potentially Mayville and partner potentially with East Central to have sufficient water unless you nominated for more, and then if you go at like the Cargill Corn Processing Plant down in Wapentin, that's almost three CFS, the simple French fry plant is about three CFS, and the big Budweiser Barley Multi-Plant in Morhead is five, and if you go all the way to the right side there, there's been talk about an extra fertilized facility in both Grand Forks and Spiritwood outside of Jamestown, and that particular facility would use twelve CFS, which is about eight million gallons per day or fifty-six hundred gallons per minute, you can just see the sheer magnitude of water they're using. And then, for sake of time, we didn't add another slide, but we have one that shows data centers and data mining and plastic facility and other things that are being considered in North Dakota, and all of those are pretty big water users as well. If we look at how then, how could you use the water? You need to break away from your typical process of a well going to your RO treatment plant and going out into distribution, as when Sean gets up here to talk about the cost for the project, he's worked extensively with Grand Forks on their recent Foo Fang Project, or we call it the F-word affectionately because it went away, but the Foo Fang Project and then the current Epidemie Soy Cracking Facility, and both of those facilities, we're just looking at either using raw water, straight out of the river, or wastewater effluent, and so most of these industries aren't looking for drinking water, they're looking for a water that they can just simply use, and so if that pipeline came over to you, one approach is that you could sell it directly to industry without doing anything to it. Another approach, depending on how the real water districts view it, is the egg use is going up, 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 and so some of the areas are looking at adding egg depots, high-volume egg depots with that water. A more creative approach would be as, because you have an aquifer here, you could use the water to put what's called managed aquifer recovery, where you actually put the water either in a holding pond or an injection well and put it down in the ground and store it there, and what that would do is increase the amount of groundwater supply that you have in the region, and then the last resort would be if you think you're going to run short of water in Hillsborough, you could potentially treat it and either serve it to a community or farmstead. When we did the analysis back in twenty sixteen, and I'll show you some growth numbers today, when you look at your growth, I don't think you're gonna run out of your groundwater, and so we're not here as Chicken Little saying that the sky is falling in terms of the amount of water you're gonna need long-term, it's more of an opportunity for Hillsborough to partner with its neighbors on water supply. This just shows, and this isn't the shape of most communities we go to, you can see that most of the communities in North Dakota grew to a peak in the thirties, when the dirty thirties hit, most of the communities start going down, then they've seen just a little bit of an uptick in the last two years as a result of kinda the general upswing in North Dakota. Given your presence between Fargo and Grand Forks, you can see that your population is, with a little, Topsy Turvy has pretty consistently grown since nineteen twenty, and so when we go out and forecast a couple different ways of looking at that, it suggests that if you stayed on the same linear growth plan as you have now, you could be somewhere around eighteen hundred people, and then the Bureau of Reclamation actually did some work for you back in two thousand, and they suggested that you could get somewhere between nineteen hundred and two thousand people, but even with that, we think your groundwater supply is adequate. I know you really wanted to focus on cost then, and so as Sean comes up, we are getting to the point where Dwayne indicated there's some contracts that need to be signed, and he'll quickly go over some of the cost numbers, and then we'll explain a little bit about the contract stuff, and then I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, so just real quickly gonna hit on where we're at financially and look at the project and where we've made some projections for systems related to what your anticipated cost of participation in the project is. A lot of what we'll show you as far as projections is primarily built upon somewhat what Dwayne hit as far as our legislative funding this session, there were a couple key things that happened, there was the cost share from the state, their seventy-five percent share in the project, that was a hundred and eighty million, and there's the loan fund of sixty million. Fargo and Grand Forks on that sixty million dollar loan fund have signed their commitment agreements, in essence, to fund, or basically finance roughly forty-eight point seven million of that. There's another eleven point three million that is required, and that is a part of all the small systems, and that loan, as it was set up, is set up to be, I'd say, very flexible in terms of how we pay it. So what we set up this biennial in terms of cost share, what we set up this biennial with the state as far as the loan program, a lot of that is a basis for some of the projections we're gonna show you, because there are essentially four more biennial funding packages that are going to be required in order to build the project out to completion around a ten-year timeframe. So we have the state cost share, we have the loan program that was created, we have the project, as Dwayne highlighted, that is now the N-Dog Alternative on the McCluskey Canal. When we were back in twenty twenty-one, I believe is the last time we met with the city of Hillsborough on this, the numbers and the values that we shared at that time was based on the full state project making its way all the way to the Missouri River. We now have the benefit of that federal decision, and so the projections are based on utilizing that federal project and saving those dollars Dwayne mentioned. You know, on the financing side of things, that is one of the very unique things we've been able to do with the state, that financing, it's forty-year, two percent money for the local share, I don't know anywhere else where you can go find forty-year, two percent money right now. On top of that, they've also given us a handful of additional levers that they pulled within that financing to include a deferral period, so if you were to make a commitment to the project and the current financing, your share of that remainder, eleven point three million, that deferral period, you would not be required to make a payment in essence for two years. Then thereafter, there's a three-year interest-only period, and then after that, they allowed us to actually shape the debt. You know, Steve talked a lot about industrial opportunities and the potential that this could provide for Hillsborough and your neighbors, that opportunity, the likelihood of it being there day one, you know, when we turn the project on, is probably not, the stars won't align quite that well, and so the state recognized when we were talking to them about structuring this loan program for the local share, is the idea of being flexible, the idea of making the project cheaper earlier and allowing systems to grow into it, so it allowed us to step into it with deferrals, interest-only, and then compressed principal payments, where essentially you pay less early, more later, while you wait for that industry or that opportunity to materialize. That shape of the financing, your first payment in essence, when all of the deferrals and interest-only, that first payment is about twenty percent less than your last payment. So think about growing in, and then growing into that payment across the forty years, as we highlighted. On top of that, they're not requiring any coverage or reserving requirements, which typically would be required on like a state revolving fund, loan, or just a traditional, you know, revenue bond financing. So that gives a lot of tools, like I said, with that financing to make it affordable, and that is the basis for these projections as well. The project overall is based on the local cost, so Dwayne highlighted the one point two-six billion, the local cost share on that is the, just short of three hundred and eleven million, all of that gets rolled into that financing, like I said, across the bienniums of funding packages, but we're not just talking about the capital cost share of this project, we're also talking about the operating maintenance administration, reserving requirements of the project as well. When we talk operations, the project overall is meant to always continuously run six cubic feet per second through the project, we can't have a six-foot diameter pipeline just sitting stagnant full of water, so there is an operating cost component of that to always have the project in good working order, that's about four hundred thousand dollars annually, the maintenance and administration, so for Dwayne, his staff, all the various parts, consumables that are gonna be required on an annual basis to keep the project, again, in good working order, that's about two point three million dollars, third number down there. And then in addition to that, we don't wanna be nickel and diming systems, and so we also have done an analysis on what we would expect to have to pay for in the early fifteen to twenty years of project operating around things that are gonna wear out, electrical controls, pumps, et cetera, and we're also including in these projections the need to reserve, that's six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars annually. So all of that is essentially what becomes the local share and what is ultimately then allocated to the systems that choose to participate. So we've looked at your allocation based on that point five CFS among the full one hundred and fifty-nine CFS to come up with a projection for Hillsborough's anticipated costs or projected costs. This is, on an annual basis, what we would project that to be in the year twenty thirty-four, and the reason we picked the year twenty thirty-four is that's when we expect the project to be completed, operating, and we're to the point where you would be paying full principal and interest on those loans that I just mentioned. So in the year twenty thirty-four, for those four cost components, for the finance share, roughly twenty-four thousand dollars annually, for the operations, you know, just sort of nine hundred dollars annually, for the maintenance administration, five thousand dollars annually, and then the near-term reserving, fifteen hundred annually. You add all of those up, and if you look over on the right-hand side, upper right-hand side, the current projected cost of participation for Hillsborough for that point five CFS is thirty-two thousand dollars, that's the sum of the four numbers in green to the left. Mayville having the exact same nomination type as you, their numbers are exactly the same, that just by chance happens to be the case here, we're showing this for all systems to understand, you know, their size, their cost relative to their neighbors, in this instance, they are exactly the same. But one thing I would point out, and this is something we've been working with Casey even as recently as today, is we've been trying to represent what does that mean for each system as far as if you were to ask a user on your system or a typical user on your system, what would you be asking them to contribute monthly if it were all on water bill? And those values for Hillsborough and Mayville, you can see over there the three seventy-six and the dollar forty-eight per month, that three seventy-six per month for Hillsborough in green was based on some water usage data we had on file from twenty eighteen, some of the more recent numbers we've gotten from Casey here would suggest that maybe we had a bad number on file, I think.
We were just talking.
In twenty eighteen, and so I was just looking at it, I think what I saw, about one hundred and thirty-five million gallons used annually, it was eighteen million cubic feet, I believe, was roughly on average for twenty-two, twenty-three, eighteen million cubic feet, so that converts to one hundred and thirty-five million gallons annually, and that, you know, after looking through that a little bit further today, I think that's correct. This number here, I'll show you in a moment, I think it was forty million gallons.
But I was at one thirty-five, some must be sold to rural range.
That's what we're asking that question today, and you didn't know that for certain.
If you use a hundred gallons of capital per day and a hundred people, I'd expect it to be about sixty-six million, just as a guess, somewhere roughly around sixty million.
So it's somewhere between the two numbers we have, and I think we just have to ferret on a couple of other things. So all I'm trying to point out is on this slide, I think you're using more water than we have on file, I'm not certain how much more, but if that is the case, your three seventy-six per month would actually be less than we're showing, because we'd have more units of water if you just spread it across, and it would lower each. it across, and it would lower each.
Why don't you talk about federal funding, then, while you talk about that?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. One of the big other things, Dwayne highlighted, the NDOS project and the approval that we received on the record of the decision, that gave us eligibility for federal funds. We, potential eligibility all the way up to $454 million to project completion. None of the values we're showing you here include any federal funding offset. And so Dwayne and the team, Garrison team, have very recently been communicating with Senator Hoven, and in current, you know, bill drafts, Hoven is looking at an appropriation to essentially get that $454 million provided to the project, which would bring all of these dollar amounts down significantly. There's some details to work out. If $454 million is provided, who gets the complete benefit of those dollars between the state and the local share? It's been proposed 50/50 has been the initial proposal that has been made. If that is the case, I would expect these amounts to come down to about a third or to a half of the amount we're showing here. So there's a lot of potential with that federal funding to make this even more feasible. Point of this graphic, we did provide everyone with, we did provide everyone with projections. And the point of this graphic and the projection that was in the financial summary gave you is that when we talk about those costs, if you recall, I mentioned the year 2034, we're not asking for all, you know, if you were to sign a commitment, a memorandum of commitment or ultimately send the PPA, we're not asking for the dollars today, you know, that the check required day one. We are expected to take essentially eight more years to build on this 10-year schedule. That comes with four more, like I said, biennial funding packages, and essentially what you're seeing in the orange bars here is how we would expect that cost to phase in over time to that annual amount of that $32,000 that was on the prior slide. So that $32,000 isn't expected to be needed for about 10 years into the future annually. And along those lines, that will give you time to plan ultimately how you would implement that with your rates or maybe other local funds to pay for it. And really what we're showing here, then, in the orange pluses all the way up to the green $3.76 per month, is if you were to incrementally implement that with each biennium's funding package, how those increases could be stepped in on your users over time, getting to that $3.76 amount. This is that exact same information shown for Mayville and Hillsborough in the top graphic that's showing incrementally the increases to the monthly bills required to fully fund that across the construction timeframe and to the start of operations. And then the bottom table is just showing how, it's essentially the values that are associated with those bars on the prior graph and the actual numbers from very early on, just a couple thousand dollars a year, growing to that full $32,000 a year by the year 2034.
And the MOC number would likely be in the...
In the very early years, what we're talking about is a memorandum of commitment. So again, back to the 60 million, if you were to sign a memorandum of commitment to this year on that 60 million financing, your share would just be for, you know, your allocation of that $11.3 million of the 60 million, and it would be the very early years of the payment essentially shown here in the bottom table. So if you did make the decision on the MOC or the memorandum of commitment to execute that with Garrison, you're only committing yourself to the very early financing components of the project. This is the value we have on file, which doesn't match any of the numbers we just mentioned as far as your water usage. And so we will update all of these graphics and figures on the bill impacts once we do work that out with Casey and the team. But just, this was what we used for that $3.76. I expect that number to go down as we increase this following process.
So as we transitioned, then, what Sean was describing was would be the cost of the water at basically Cooperstown at the end of the pipe. And so there will be some additional costs to get the water over to you, but we don't anticipate that you'd ever incur any of that cost till you were ready. I mean, you'd have to have an industry here to make, have it make sense. And we are in the process of taking that brown pipeline, and we're putting together an example business plan for that brown pipeline. And what that would show is how much the pipe would cost, how much it would cost operationally. We would look at some projected industrial revenue off that pipe, and we'd probably look at selling 25% initially, and then 50, and then 75, and then 100, so that you wouldn't, you'd look at what the risk would be over time. And then some counties are looking at potentially going to their economic development corporation and having a little bit of the money for the project paid for by economic development that's legal within the state statutes. And because it's speculative in nature, that would be one approach that Mayville and Hillsborough could consider. And so as soon as we get that analysis done, we will come back and share that with you either at this meeting or at an informal meeting as soon as we get it completed. Just, oops, went the wrong way, sorry. So then heading to the home stretch, we just have a couple slides left. So as Dwayne mentioned, there's two big agreements that we're working on. So in 2016, when you signed up and paid a little bit of money in, there's been more money required in '17, '19, and '21, every time the legislature met. But because Fargo and Grand Forks didn't feel that the project had moved far enough along with Garrison, they funded the remainder of those activities. And so with the fact that we're now spending $240 million and the local map is getting to be a bigger number, and because we want to go back to legislature at the end of the year and say we have our sign-ups, the first step will be this MOC. What's an MOC? In that MOC, you'd be expressing that, yes, I want to be in the project. You'd be picking your nomination, and it can be that .5 CFS or it can be a different number if you're interested in something different. You'd be committing to just that Series D contribution, and we have so many letters and acronyms, but that small dollar amount of about $1,600 to $1,800 a year, you'd be committing to saying that you're going to pay that, and that's all the MOC would do. But that would then give us some real sign-ups for the project, because now we're afraid that with no money on the line, people won't have to make a firm commitment to the project. Worth a firm commitment will have a better sense of where we stand. If you get cold feet before year end and don't want to sign the project participation agreement, there's no guarantee that you'll get bought out of that commitment, so you need to be prepared to pay that. But the agreement is assignable. And what that means, as Dwayne indicated, that we think we have interest in all of the capacity in the pipeline. So if you got cold feet by year end and you could find another user on the project to assign that contract to, you could get out of that responsibility and walk away from the project. So the MOC is really a good intention agreement with the exception of that smaller financial commitment, and that is assignable. The big commitment you're going to have to make if you're interested would be at year end. That's when the big project participation agreement would be due. That's about a 90-page agreement with about 300 pages of exhibits, and so we didn't want to just flop that down on your desk. It's pretty onerous, but they'd had special legal counsel going through it, and I think by the time it gets to Hillsborough, there's Fargo, Grand Forks, Lawa, have all have looked at that in detail and make sure that it's representing your best interests. I guess she must have copied this one. And then the only other thing I'll mention before I'll hand it back to Dwayne is that because Hillsborough sits in a real water district, the likelihood of you guys getting a sale of a big ag industry right in city limits is probably not very high. It would, could be close to you, because they're going to want to be close to where the workers are, but if being right in town, just like Crystal Sugar isn't in city limits, this wouldn't be in city limits. If you know about all the ways that different people or systems are protected, East Central can't come and sell water within Hillsborough city limits, and you can't go sell water within their city, within their district boundaries. But what we've come up with is what's called a joint or cooperative nomination agreement. And in that agreement, if you can work something out with East Central, you would draw a radius, for example, around Hillsborough, five miles, 10 miles, 15 miles. And if anything happened within that radius and there wasn't sufficient water that Hillsborough could provide or East Central could provide, then you would sell project water to them on a proportional basis to your nomination. And the benefit of that is then you can't get taken advantage of, where if it happens right next to your city limits, that East Central nominates and takes that away from you or vice versa. And that draft nomination agreement, we do have in review right now, so we'll also share that when it gets ready. And that agreement talks about how you'd nominate together, how you'd go about maintaining both of your franchise protections, how you'd share that service territory, how you'd provide service to the prospective users, how you'd go about setting rates, and then how you'd share the revenue as a result of that. This really came from Carrington, where the real water district, they were selling to them, the real water district built right up to their boundaries and decided that they didn't need their water anymore. And so Hillsborough's like, why would I, or Carrington's like, why would I ever nominate again under this circumstance, because I'll just get taken advantage over again? This is a provision that would protect all of those communities and all the real water districts from those kind of things happening.
So we wanted to assure you tonight that this isn't the last time we're going to talk to you. If you want to run figures, we're keeping Sean real busy with his model, because most of the people that nominated are trying to figure out what they can afford and if they can expand or what they want to do. And so we're here, if you come up with a nomination scheme, Sean can work with you to tell you what that nomination scheme would cost you. And so we want you to know that we're here to work with you, and so we're not going to leave tonight and then forget about you, that we'll be at your disposal. So you're, I think you're getting towards the end of the, we're getting through the second time here now, so. But we've got the time to work with you if you decide on what kind of a nomination you want to do, or if you have more questions on what it would cost. And we'll help you to determine those desired nominations. And I think we've talked to East Central a couple times now, and we know that they're interested in something. And so I think a joint nomination with you and East Central probably be a smart thing to look at, and also maybe expanding with Mayville. And so those are ideas we wanted you to have in your head that after this evening, you can talk about them amongst yourselves and kind of decide which direction you want to go, if you want to go. So the service benefits of the Red River Water Supply are future economic development of activities, industrial growth and expansion. You're lucky with the beet plant, it's a water adder, not a water user, but another type of industry you're probably going to need water for. Secure a backup domestic water supply. We don't know what these aquifers are going to do in a 30-style drought. No records were kept in. Everybody's assuming that they're going to be there, we don't know. And then it'll guarantee you a stable, reliable water supply. Why join now? Because legislature did put in a latecomer fee. If you don't sign up, well, everybody else will sign it up, and you come back later and you decide you want to sign up. They didn't say what it is, but they said there would be a latecomer fee. And then, like we said at the very beginning, we think the pipe is going to get sold during the signup process, so you probably want to look at joining now or never. We want to thank you. I guess our vice chair would like to give some closing remarks, and with that, then we will get out of your air.
If you have any questions, Dan.
And if you have questions. I know we weren't as exciting as the dogs, but.
Well, thank you. I'm Jay Anderson, the Meister of Garrison, Virginia. With that, yeah, just like to say a big thank you to Steve, Sean, and Dwayne with all these meetings and making it informational. But I guess the main thing, I guess I want to make sure to leave you with is make sure that you're looking forward. If you think back, think when you were young, let's label it that way, say, you know, 10 years old, 20-year-old, think of what water was being used. Think of the potential of things that have happened since then. You know, way down, like down in my area, I'm in Lisbon, I'm in the southeast corner. You know, we have a Cargill Pro Gold corn milling plant, and we have a sugar beet factory, we have a Castleton, you know, soybean processing facility, and we have a corn ethanol plant, you know, also at Castleton. With that, those kind of economic development facilities use a lot of water. And I guess the thing that I want to leave you with is that make sure you're thinking forward. I can attest, I'm also a director on a real water system, Southeast Real Water, and I've been on and involved in it since 1994. And every year, our water demand and need per user has increased. That's every year, it's technically always increased. With that, we're getting to the point, and of course, we're involved in this project also, that, you know, we are looking forward and where can we, you know, capitalize, you know, in regards on, you know, the water demand and all. So with that, in leaving, again, thank you, and I'm sure we'll all be in touch with Dwayne and Sean and Steve, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions right off the bat?
Just curious, you're drawing this from the Missouri River? And what basis is that sort of drought, like the 30s, that the Missouri River's going to have water?
The lowest flow of the Missouri River ever documented was 13,000 cubic feet per second of natural flow. And so we're asking like 165. And we don't, we have another slide that we didn't show you tonight, and there's a lot of other states that are coming after the Missouri River. And I added up what they're asking for out of the Missouri River, and it actually is more than that 13,000 cubic feet that would be the lowest flow ever. So, I mean, at this point, the Missouri River is an uncompacted river, and that may change because the tribes over in Montana got a great big water settlement out of the state of Montana, and our tribes are looking at that, and so they might go after the Missouri River. And South Dakota's going after Kansas. You look to the southwestern part of the United States, Colorado, and even as far away as Los Angeles, have looked at the Missouri River through the Bureau of Reclamation, and they do have plans on the book. I'm sure that any of those states would do that, would, there's certainly going to be a lot of legal challenges involved before they're ever going to get any water out of Missouri. State of Missouri actually has a law on its books that it challenges in court every drop of water that comes out of the Missouri River. And so that's why the NOS project in North Dakota was in court for 17 years, and we were in court for two years or whatever, but we did an environmental impact statement, which is the highest level of environmental work you can do, where they only did an environmental assessment, and that's what they got sued on, they had to go back and do it in EIS. So right now, the Missouri River certainly handled this project even in a drought. You also have to remember that the drought here isn't necessarily drought in the Missouri River, because the Missouri River gets its water out of the mountains on this side of the mountains. And so we could be a 30-style drought here and they could have snow in the mountains. So those are, so we had to do those needs and options report for the federal government, and the finding was that there's more than enough water in the Missouri River right now. And it's permitted. When North Dakota gave up over 500,000 acres of river-bottom land for the Lake Sakakwea, we were permitted 1,000 acre feet of water or more than that. We haven't even scratched the surface on using that, but it's under Western Water Law.
I think it's a million acre feet.
What's that?
Million acre feet.
Million acre feet of water, and you know, we haven't even scratched the surface of that, but we're under Western Water Law, which is first in time, you know, first in right. And so if somebody else comes to the Missouri River with a project that puts the water to beneficial use, they can actually take some of our permit away. And that's why the state feels like there is some kind of, some urgency into getting this pipe nominated out and getting it done and get the water pumping, because our neighbors to the south are looking at the Missouri River.
What you're saying is a lot of truth, the whiskey's for drinking and the water's for finding.
Oh, yeah, you pay a lot for your...
So we've mentioned...
If I was going to law school right now, I'm sure looking water.
You guys mentioned Graff Works in Fargo and Hillsborough and Mayville. Is there anyone else, or is it, we're just the four main key points on this?
Yeah, we take it for granted. There's 35 different systems that signed up originally in 2016, 20 communities, and all 15 real water districts.
all 15 rural water districts between the Missouri River, the Red River, and the North Dakota and South Dakota border. The only exceptions notable in a community is like of your size, Harvey and New Rockford didn't sign up, and they cited the fact that Carrington always wins the economic development battles, and so they weren't going to sign up. They also were in that area where those canals got shut down, and so they're kind of quote-unquote pissed about Garrison diversion, and so they have some hard feelings. At the time, Breckenridge didn't sign up, but we've been that back down, and Breckenridge is probably as excited as anybody, because they've seen a lot of interest from high-volume processors. Oaks didn't sign up, but we've been down in Oaks, and it looks like they may sign up, but in terms of your neighbors, Lisbon, Valley City, Grafton, Park River, along the pipeline, Carrington, Cooperstown, some of the small towns, Hannaford, Mcville. I don't know, Sean, if you can think of it. We have a whole list, we have a map, but.
You're doing good.
Sergeant Central Rule, Gwinner, so.
Yeah, Lisbon's been signed up. We have, Gwinner didn't sign up, but we're trying to get them interested as well.
East Grand Forks is going to buy their water from Grand Forks. Morehead was out, but then the Minnesota DNR did not give them any more water permitted out of the Buffalo Aquifer right east of there, and so then they're back, they're going to buy their water from Fargo, and so.
Laramore was part of it, but they're going to join East Central. Langdon was part of it, they're going to join Northeast. All right, so there's just.
So the only rural water system we got to know from was Central Plains, and now they want water depots, so they're in, actually. So we have a lot of people that did nominate, now they want water, but of course, the people that did nominate will get first shot at the pipe, so.
The other, is that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The other thing that we haven't told you, and it sounds a little bit used car sales-like and stuff, but I'm going to say it anyway, is that we're building this pipeline for both economic development and drought, and if Fargo and Grand Forks continue to grow, this pipeline will only meet their needs through 2075. If you look at the trajectory of Fargo and Grand Forks, there's likely going to be a second pipe required, not in our lifetimes, maybe not even in our children's lifetimes, but eventually, they're going to need a second pipeline. Before that happens, I sense that, and I've talked to the Fargo City Administrator, Fargo will go out and buy everybody's unused capacity before they build that second pipe. And that's not, not in a threatening way, only if you're willing to sell it. If you're not willing to sell it, you can keep it for original purpose, but you could sell it, you could lease it to them, because it's going to be so much cheaper to take a project built in the 2020s than it is going to be, take a project that's built in 2070s, and that's probably, 1.2 billion is going to be five or six billion in that period of time. And so I can almost assure you that your ancestors, who eventually will be able to put this water to work, you'll either be able to use it for industry, you'll be able to use it to sell to another partner that has an industry close to you, but it doesn't happen to be in Hillsborough, it is your property right, you can sell it. And in the worst case, I think you'll sell it to one of those big municipalities, or lease it to one of those big municipalities, ensuring that you get your money back, but it's going to be a long play, it's not going to be a short one. So you're not shorting stock for six months, you're shorting your stock for 50 years.
The example I'll give there, Steve, is, you know, we talked about the wet corn mill in Grand Forks. If they would have gotten that project, you know, all the way to the finish line, Grand Forks would have needed to increase their nomination.
You're breaking the mic rule there.
Sorry. Just meaning that that one project in Grand Forks would have consumed their entire industrial nomination that they have in the project.
Left, yeah.
Yeah, that they have left in the project, and so they would have, you know, immediately day minus zero have had to go get more. And so I think there's going to be things like that that do happen, you know, they're going to be out there, and people are going to be looking for it.
That was my next question, if you pick a .5 CMS and you don't need it, do you sell that that you don't need, or can you adjust, buy more if you need more? How does that work?
I think you could always sell it, because it is a property right, but to get more, you would have to then go out, most likely, and round up some of your neighbors. And so if they look at the interstate, and you, you know, you broke across the interstate with your two manufacturing facilities there, and somebody says, okay, between Fargo and Grand Forks on the interstate, we have rail, you know, whatever other things they look at, say Hillsborough's our spot, if it's more than .5, you'd look to partner right away with East Central and Mayville, most likely. If it's more than they need, then you'd go to Grand Forks and Fargo, most likely, because they know whatever you get here is going, you know, up and down to Ralph for a hockey game, or shopping at the mall, or whatever the case may be. And so they'd look at that as a regional opportunity, and then you'd either, you know, get it from them, or they would just sell a part of it, so you don't have the risk, they would just sell part of their water, but that's the model that we're looking at.
It's probably Fargo's mall and our hockey game.
That's what I'm saying.
No, I know, I know. They're not coming to our mall.
Yeah, we, you know, we talked to the Commerce Department, because they get the calls in North Dakota of businesses that want to come, and they said the number one thing, and you have it, is they want an interstate highway. They don't just want a highway, they want an interstate highway. Then they want gas, and then they want electricity.
Rail.
Rail, and.
And then, yeah, abundant electricity.
That's why the data centers and all that that are so high, electrical use are ending up in western North Dakotas, because they're right close to the generation, so. But you're, you're in a really good spot with the interstate highway.
Other questions?
All I have.
Where?
I have nowhere. I'm good, that's all I have. I usually hear questions soon, so, no.
Any other questions from? You guys don't have to make a decision tonight.
No, don't.
It is a, you got to digest it. We sat through two hours, and we had to digest it all, so.
But, you know, talk amongst yourselves, and I'm sure after you've done that, you're going to probably want Sean or Steve to come back and work on the figures for you, and we're still working on the branch pipelines, so we're, I think we're close.
Yeah.
So, and it's, just one other thing is, you know, Fargo sells their used water to .700 and the soybean plant, and they're, they're making a ton of money on their water that they're, they told us that themselves.
And so when we do this business plan for you, we're going to look at putting the amount that you're investing in that business model. So we're not expecting the citizens of Hillsborough to carry that long-term, we're expecting that you'd be wise enough to put any pipeline costs in, as well as your contribution to the project into that business plan, and then you'd still have a margin after that. You know, and I don't know how much, but if you've got a successful industry, and that's the way you'd want to do it, and that's how we'll set up the business model.
We know you're elected officials, and you got to be able to look your constituents in the eye and tell them you did a smart thing. And so we want to work with you long enough, so whatever you do, we want you to be able to look your constituents in the eye and say, we did a smart thing.
And Dwayne's board, of which Jay's the vice chair, has really told us that we can, if you call, we're going to help. So if you want to see what .25 looks like, if you want to see what 1 looks like, you know, so you can see both ends of it, we'll get you those numbers. If you want to have a set-up meeting with Mayville, so you can chat some more, if you want a meeting with East Central, and you feel like they're a bit of a big brother, we can facilitate that for you, whatever it takes to get to the finish line, if you're interested. And if you're not interested, we will not pressure you, it's your choice.
But it's ultimately, if we as a city want to grow, we, do we want that right, that potential, and it's not going to happen today or tomorrow, it is 10, 15 years down the road, what we've been looking at. And, you know, we can't go back and say, you know, we go back and say sometimes, well, why didn't they do this back in the few, in the past? That's what it's going to be, so we have to make the right, is 30,000, or 35, or whatever that amount is, is it worth the work, worthwhile investment now for the next 50 years? And I know, that didn't come across when I was trying to explain it to you, so these guys did a much better job.
We didn't say it as nicely as you just did.
Well, thank you, well, thank you guys.
Deep couple from your intersection. Dwayne said you have Anderson, you have rail too.
Do you want to share that? You were out there when anybody said to get a longer table.
Okay, I will put that on my.
I just know you were out there talking, except I don't know if you heard.
I didn't, no, thank you. Okay, perfect.
80 feet.
80 feet.
If there's child that wants to sit on your car.
No, we don't need that one. We had one here one time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I said I'd send you the slides from tonight's meeting after, after you got them.
And we had the big pack from the other meeting, if you want to see it, Casey can share it with you as well.
Sean probably finished figuring out the numbers tomorrow, and then send it out. He had a question on them numbers.
So if we, if you guys want to think about this and come back at the next meeting and try to make a decision if we want to buy into it or not, but.
I'd like to see the new numbers.
Right. Okay, let's move on, and we'll go into delinquent bill list, which kind of ties into the email that Casey had sent us, because I don't see it on the.
I, no, I didn't put it on there, that was something that popped up just today.
Yep. If you guys seen it, it was somebody that had a bill, was on the bill list, or in the disconnect list, signed up for a.
Contract.
Contract, violated that contract, and then we were able to put them on another contract, and now we're delinquent on that contract again, and that would be number 27, if you guys were wondering on the amount that's due.
There is more on that as of late this afternoon. The customers who were going to be here decided not to come because they signed up for assistance, and they, they have yet to be approved, but the county has requested that the city work with them to make sure that the bill is paid. I said that's up to you guys, I let them know when the due date is. So if you guys are willing to give any sort of extension, county office is supposed to be paying the bill, that's what I know as of right now.
They are paying the full amount?
Yep, that's what I was told.
What's the total bill?
$1,015.54.
And that's prior to the next bills being generated, those will be generated this week. So that entire amount will have penalty on it after, after today.
So you're not going to do a new contract group?
I'd rather not.
That one up taking?
Correct.
That's up taking.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't either.
And nor will we do another contract with them, ever. I would suggest that the only way that they don't get shut off is if there is a written, written from the county, or wherever those funds are coming from, that they will get paid.
I agree. They, they're.
They have since twice been.
Yeah.
Okay, then do I have a motion to approve the disconnect list?
Make the motion.
Dave makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Dave, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next item is the presentation, the April financials.
Trying to get it loaded up.
You're not hooked, you got to go windows key again.
Okay, it's not popping up for me on, on here, though. No.
We can try that other screen character.
Try the other one? No signal detected.
Everybody should have it, right?
Um, yes. It was on the, on the link for the meeting. Nothing, nothing too surprising for the month of April. If you go to the meeting link, you're able to see the cash balance and investments for the city. As of right now, everything included, balance of all funds plus investments comes to $3,902,636.18. The budget control is also available online, nothing surprising for the month of April that I noticed on there either. And if I can get the SmartCast to work, we'll, we'll get it pop back up on the, on the screen. And it doesn't seem to want to.
No, it doesn't, that's why, maybe I have to get a cables.
Oh, yes.
So if you guys take a look at those. Otherwise, we'll move on into the commission reports, we'll start with Dave tonight.
I have nothing tonight.
Paul?
I don't have a lot, we, I was down to the Missouri River Energy Services Commission. They always do a great job, Casey was down there too, it's really a lot of, a lot of good information, they have a lot, they've added a lot more services to than they've done in the past, so we might want to look at using some of those services. One of them that really jumped out to me was strategic planning, that they can work with us on. I would like to do more research on that and find out if that's something that we can, that we can do moving forward. So, of course, we're still working for alignment and all that happy stuff, so hopefully it'll, hopefully one of these next ones will work out for us. There's a lot of things we've got, we're in the summer here, I mean, a lot of get, a lot of things moving forward, and until we get this, I think if we don't get something soon, we're just going to have to meet with Missouri River, and we're going to have to lay down a plan for the summer, and work with them, and nodak potentially, to get some of the summer projects we need to get done, done. So, that's all I have.
Okay, Jason?
I have nothing.
Nicole?
I have nothing.
Man, you guys are making it easy tonight.
Jesus, look at the rest of the agenda.
Great. Planning is only met, and they forwarded on the information for you, there's a couple of other items on there that we'll go over. On the beautification side, next month is when a lot of the court cases will come up that are on there. There has been a few that have been forwarded on to you guys, but I held off on them because we had a long enough agenda tonight, so I'll get it on the next meeting. They are sending out letters currently for 44 trees that we're looking at taking out, that's 100% covered by the Forest Service Grant. We got one bid in so far, and it was 13,000 something to take out all the trees, and that's cars, which we've used before, that is everything down to the stumps, and then we'd be looking at renting a stump grinder this summer. this summer after those are out to get all the stumps taken out. And then within the same letter, we're going to ask residents to, those that want to put a tree back in their boulevard that we would ask them to take care of it. We did get water bags through the grant, so those would go on the trees, but we're looking at putting in a hundred trees, anywhere from three to, or four to six foot trees based on who we can get, so. But forty-four taken out would be just a pretty good number to get out for that amount. A lot of them are, got damaged in the storm or broken over, so.
And if I understand right, we're going to, they'll be getting letters and if they have issues, that they don't want their tree taken off for whatever reason, they don't think it's bad shape, that they, they need to just get back to the city or.
Yep, and that won't happen.
No.
Other than that, we should have some more information on that in the next meeting. JR, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing from me.
Casey?
Um, I have a couple of things. First one is, this came in later on Friday, so it wasn't on your agenda, but Heritage Publication would like to do another Trail County magazine. Here, I'll pass one, I'm going to pass one each way. This is a publication put out with all of Trail County in it. They are looking for Hillsborough to do an advertising, the same advertising that was done in these last two editions, is called a double truck advertising. The cost of it this year would be nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and if you flip through the pages, you can see what the ad was. It's a, it's a two page as soon as you open it. But they are, they are looking to see if you guys would be willing to, to do that. So there's that. Tyler Tech update, I've had a few people ask me about it and how the grant ties in from MRES. We're still waiting to hear from the Department of Energy on if we, if the entire grant is accepted or not yet. We won't know that until later this year and the most that we would get out of the grant would be twenty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars, which is half of what the, half of the portion of what would be applicable to utility billing would be, metering, utility billing, all of that. The entire program with all of the bells and whistles that was asked for in the first quote from Tyler was seventy-five thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars as a one-time fee, so it'd take twenty-six thousand two fifty off of that and that's what the city would be required to cover for everything included. After that, recurring fees would be thirty thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars per year. So if the commission is interested in going with Tyler, I think it would be advantageous to plan on it in the 2025 budget, but those are the numbers that we'd be looking at if the grant is given.
So today we'd have to put down, or the next meeting, we'd have to put down some of it for the start, but a majority of it would come out of the 2025 budget because even if we started now, it wouldn't get implemented until then, so.
Yep, it does, I did clarify with Brad at MRES and he did say that no contracts can be signed sooner if you are part of the grant, so we still got to wait it out according. Yep.
Okay, so I guess we got to wait.
Yep, the soonest that we could have Tyler up and running if the commission were to go with them would possibly be May, April or May of twenty-five. So, there's that.
And it is, the county has switched over that, so that would help a lot with our property and everything, property cards, payments, different things, so it is a benefit to do this, along with the benefit of having it, Missouri River also helping us with it.
Mind me again with the grant you're looking at, the amount of that?
Yep, it's a fifty-fifty grant that MRES is helping us apply for through the Department of Energy. The costs that are applicable to the grant, with it being fifty-fifty, the entire, the entire amount is fifty-two thousand five hundred that we could get a fifty percent reimbursement on, so twenty-six thousand two fifty would be what the grant would give us back.
And then how much they want to start?
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Seventy-five something.
Yep, about seventy-five hundred bucks as like a down payment. The, the entire amount for all the bells and whistles is seventy-five thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and that's for installation, transferring everything over from our current software and that would just be for the one-time fee. Recurring fees every year after would be thirty thousand four twenty-two.
And there is no server then involved with it, we wouldn't need that anymore. The bills off, or the billing software is integrated into Tyler, so we don't have to pay that separately, we won't, we wouldn't have those issues.
Do we have a dollar amount on what those would save us totally?
I didn't do that.
Well, the server is going to.
I remember I got the server and stuff and saved it to Casey, I can't remember.
It's like twenty-five or somewhere around in there, I would guess, and then it's, I think it's seventy-five or nine thousand.
I think Joe said twenty-five hundred a year for the server and then also there was some other fees that we would save.
Yep, you, you messaged me that Joe says that switching to the new program would save around five to six thousand a year.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Per year plus the purchase of the server and.
The, the purchase, he broke down.
Oh, he broke down.
Yeah, the server was part of it over, whatever they typically.
And then I think we probably spent another, around two for the billing software, probably off and on at times, so.
Sure. Yep, from current IT costs and server costs is what you said to Jase, sorry. That was in a second text.
So we don't have to make a decision on that tonight.
Yep, so there was that, then I only have two other things. Audit 2023, you don't have to make a decision on this, but I wanted to put it in front of you guys to consider getting audit 2023 done this year. We are tentatively on the schedule for a week in July to start that. I, I put that on just because of 2020 through 2022 being done and I thought, why not get 23 done if you guys would like to? I don't have an amount on it, but I feel like the cost of a single year audit is twenty to twenty-five thousand with Ida Bailey?
I believe so.
Yeah. So there's that, I can get hard numbers and let you guys know.
Is the state no longer doing them at all?
They do do them.
I know we moved to Ida Bailey because the state wasn't able to get.
We weren't able to get caught up.
Right.
We could get back on the state.
It'd just be nice to see what the comparison is of that, like cost-wise and timeline and.
Cost-wise, I believe it'd probably be less. I think we were spending fourteen to fifteen thousand before. And timeline, state would be much longer. So, but we'll get some numbers on it for you.
Yep, all right, I'm going. And then the only other thing I wanted to let you guys know, I think, I got to find out who signed me up, but I got signed up for a bootcamp for grant writing, specifically the Brownfields program through the National League of Cities. Brownfields, it's restoring property within a city that has been built on but might need resurrection and updating, so I'm currently going through that and that's a program starting this month through September. So my initial thought was possible locations downtown that could use updating, but if anybody has any ideas, in order to stay with the program, I have to have some sort of an idea of an area in town to write a grant for, so, so that's what I kind of just had it on, but if you guys have any other ideas, throw them at me, that would be.